Hello, ladies and gentlemen. It's kind of a cool house here today. So if you'd please stand for the collective leaders.
Let's lead this with the flag of the United States of America. And this is the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like to ask me to give you some education, please?
Let's pray. Gracious and loving God, we are thankful for this day that you've given us. Thankful God for the signs of spring in the air. God, we ask that you be with us as we meet tonight as a body who love our town and want to see it prosper. For this and all things, we give thanks and praise. Amen.
Please be seated. The first thing on the agenda is usually the most fun is the special presentations. We have some really good standout students here today and coaches that push these kids to do their best. So first, we'd like to recognize high school freshman Talon Hall for his Virginia two-way state wrestling championship.
What we have here is a resolution of honor, and I'd like to read it for everyone to hear. Whereas Tassau High School freshman Talon Hall has a 26-1 record with this season, and whereas Talon Hall is Southwest District Champion, and whereas Talon Hall is also named Region D Champion, and whereas Talon Hall is Class II 106-pound VHSL State Champion, and whereas Talon Hall is Tassau High School's second state champion in history and the first freshman in the school's history to place at the state tournament. Now therefore be it resolved, I'm Michael Lep Hoops, Mayor of the Town of Tassau, Virginia, with the citizens concurring to hereby commend and congratulate Talon Hall for earning the state champion title. Best wishes for continued success in the future, adopted this eighth day of March 2022.
Woo! We're gonna get more bacon in.
Yep. Two of you have everything here. You did all the work.
Give us parents up here.
Parents up. Yep. Parents, come on. You're involved with this, dude.
That's your boy.
Congratulations, girls.
One more this way.
Thank you.
Congratulations. You're very welcome. All right, next we have the recognition of the Tassau High School Track Team. So Chris Keenan provide us with a little information that I'd like to read prior to handing out our rewards and our resolutions. So this year, the girls indoor track team finished fourth in the state, which is the highest ever. And you can correct me if I do anything wrong here, Coach. We also had two other girls, all-state, Josie Witt and Sage Dagout, in the 3200-meter relay, finishing second. In the boys, we had Cassius Paris, all-state, in the triple jump, finishing sixth. The 55 dash, finishing sixth. The 300-meter, finishing third, and the 800-meter relay, finishing sixth. And then Ethan Mills, all-state high jump, finishing third. And also all-state was Jackson Duty, Chase Knoll, Logan McDonald, in the 800-meter relay, finishing sixth. And we also had four school records broke and one tied in the state meeting. Who else do we have besides the two state winners from the track team? Do we have anybody besides Coach?
I think that's Susan.
Okay. So the two young ladies that finished state, if you could come up, please. Okay.
You don't have to worry about the Tulsa dinner.
They seem pretty quiet. All right, so the same, we have a resolution of honor for both of you. I'll read one at a time. So it is, whereas freshman Abigail Rudy is Tassau High School's first ever state champion in the girls indoor track 500 meters, and whereas Abigail Rudy is fifth in the all-state 300-meter, eighth in the all-state long jump, second in the all-state 3200-meter relay, and fourth in the all-state triple jump, and whereas Abigail Rudy was second in the all-state cross-country 2021, and whereas Abigail Rudy holds the individual records in the 300-meter, 500-meter, 1,000-meter, and also part of the 3200-meter relay record at Tassau High School, and whereas Abigail Rudy holds the state indoor record for the 500 meter. Now therefore be it resolved, I'm Michael Lep Hoops, Mayor of the Town of Tassau, Virginia, with citizens concurring to hereby commend and congratulate, congratulate Abigail Rudy for earning the state champion title. Best wishes for continued success in the future, adopted this eighth day of March 2022. All right, Coach.
They'll tell you.
Oh, come on.
Sound better, look pretty, I'm going wild.
Somebody give mom this. I'm here, I gotta go this way.
That's your turn.
What are we looking for, a break?
Oh, okay.
One more. There's cameras everywhere. Good job. Well, she actually didn't say something. She said, "Thank you," so she can't talk. So next. Come on up. No one's going to fight. So it is, another resolution of honor and congratulations for your feats. So whereas junior Lauren Keen is Tassau High School's second ever state champion in the girls indoor track 3200 meter, and whereas Lauren Keen is second in the all-state 1600-meter and 3200-meter relay, and whereas Lauren Keen was sixth in the all-state cross-country 2021, and whereas Lauren Keen was third in the all-state 1600-meter and 3200-meter her sophomore year, and tenth in the all-state cross-country 2020, and whereas Lauren Keen holds the individual records in the 1600-meter, 3200-meter, and also part of the 3200-meter relay record at Tassau High School. Now therefore be it resolved, I'm Michael Lep Hoops, Mayor of the Town of Tassau, Virginia, with citizens concurring, do hereby commend and congratulate Lauren Keen for earning the state champion title. Best wishes for continued success in the future, adopted this eighth day of March 2022. Susan, we're going to you.
I'll give her a gift, Trevor. Look at the camera.
Oh, wait, you got the big camera. I'm sorry.
Hey, Coach Keen.
Coach? One more this way.
John.
They have parents, family. No more. Right here.
If only you could just tell me, I will lose.
All right, one more this way. Don't take that easy.
Good job.
Coach, if everything goes right, hopefully in the next couple of years, we'll have an indoor track later.
We're ready.
Here, Coach, don't get your cup.
Thanks, everyone, coming out. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So next, I'm pretty sure most people are familiar with who this individual is, but Manager Dave is going to introduce Mr. Aaron Kalispis.
Well, I think the mayor took care of it. So I want to say that Aaron has worked hard, and we've had a number of conversations, very busy, that I can tell you right now from talking with him, he's hardworking at Tassau. So with that being said, Aaron, it's all yours, buddy. Appreciate you.
Well, I'd like to thank Todd for extending the invitation to be here tonight, and thank you for the mayor, vice mayor, and council members for allowing me to come down here. It is my hope, holding the position as a board supervisor for our county, that we work together. And I will say, I think that there's a few reasons why this Southern District has done so well. I mean, all you have to do is look at census data. We were the only district that maintained a level of growth over the last 10 years. And I think it's because of leaders like the town has right now, and certainly the maybe more family-oriented atmosphere that we have in our district. But I do want to thank you all for being so open to communicate and start a dialogue with projects that are going on here at the town. I'm more than happy to help out as a board member to see those come to fruition. I think Tassau's a great place to be. It's certainly where, you know, I've enjoyed having my wife and kids as well, as well as where I work. But I just want to thank you all, and please don't ever hesitate to contact me if you ever have questions or need to talk about something. I'm more than happy to discuss, but thank you all.
Next, I believe Ms. Lori Stacy's got a request for October Fest.
Hello, Lori.
Hello. Well, I'm very excited to be here. First of all, during my couple of years at the Chamber, I've not been able to have October Fest. So I hope that we will have your approval tonight, and we'll be able to get on with planning. But just in case those of you don't know much about the event, I do want to go over it just a little bit. But October Brew Fest is the Chamber's annual craft beer festival, and it is one of the largest in the area, and we're so happy to be able to have it here on our Main Street in Tassau. So our community member, our committee members try to bring five to eight regional beer vendors to the event to provide a total of 50 different tastings. Plastic souvenir tasting glasses are provided to each attendee who purchased a tasting ticket. Now, we're planning for about 600 tasters, but we're hoping for about 2,000 in attendance. Since the event has been canceled the past two years, we're hoping for an incredible turnout this year. And I have to say, I'm the most optimistic now that this event, hopefully with our approval, will happen in October. So if the Chamber's approved to host this event this year, we're going to be bringing the Jamie McLean band in from New York. They've never performed here. Also, we have another band, of course, that's still cooking. They're going to be opening a band, and we can say a grateful thank you to our committee member Teddy Steele for aligning up both of these great performances. Our committee also will invite appropriate vendors that meets the needs of this target audience for the night, and we hope to offer three to four different food trucks to assist with the need to provide food to hopefully a couple of thousand people that will be there in attendance that evening. As the Tassau County Chamber of Commerce, we do hope that all businesses on Main Street will remain open this evening, and we'll enjoy the influx of new customers and sales. We also create partnerships with our local hotels and Airbnbs to allow our tourists the opportunity to spend more than just an evening in Tassau, but hopefully an entire weekend. So finally, last year, there was a launch party, the, that we had discussed, for the Friday night before, in the back of the Dragon, that would include a Beer Run 5K and loud music. Now, that is something I will bring back to you later if that does happen, and you and I have talked about that last year. But this is something that will be presented at a later time if it can be worked out, but they were very excited to be a partner last year, and we hope that they'll be on board again this year, make the event even bigger. But finally, the Chamber will request a one-day banquet license for the event, and we do request assistance with manpower. The Chamber will be making a donation to the town for the assistance of paying salaries for town employees that will be available to us on the night of October Brew Fest. Also, one more thing, while the Chamber solely operates on memberships, we do like for you all to know that this is our primary fundraiser. So thank you for your time, and I'm willing to answer any questions from council if you have them.
What day?
Oh, Saturday, October the first. It is kind of a staple event. It's always the first Saturday in October, five to seven, I mean, five to 10, sorry.
Yeah, five to seven would be way too short.
That would be too short, yes.
That's the opening band.
Exactly. So, but we are excited about the band, Jamie McLean. We actually had him booked for last year, and we had a deposit on him. So we were glad that he was actually reaching out to us very early on in the year, and he said, "Hey, I really want to come to Tassau." So we really hope this event can happen.
Now, can you raise your hand for it?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay.
Any discussion? On the paper with approval of Saturday, October 1st, October Fest taking place on Main Street, takes place by San Ai.
Aye.
I'll oppose, takes place by San Ne.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
And if anybody wants to pour beer that night, I'd love to have you.
So next on their agenda is, Mr. Cecil is going to give us an update on the recreational access project.
He gets ready to hit the beach, so he won't be very long.
Every time I get a message from him, he wants someone to be at the beach. I'm never at the beach. I'm going to tell you something, you're not going to believe right off the bat, when I saw those kids come in, getting all those track awards. When I was in high school.
Give him a three-minute sentence.
You ain't going to believe this, but when I was in high school, the fastest human being in the high school was that guy right there.
You're right.
I don't believe it. Am I right, Darren?
I think you're right.
He was quick. Then the best sound actually ever hit.
Hey, it has to be different.
Okay. Finally, after numerous years, many years.
Yeah, since Vietnam, this has been going on.
Well, I'll tell you what, the last time I was here, I was giving you preliminaries, and then we finally got the funds some years ago, and we were delayed for a long period of time while we were entertaining you back to the Dragon GoPro, or whatever it was called, with that guy. So that took a while, and didn't happen. We were, of course, working with the IOT through this whole process, and in 2020, after Talon, or Talon House for a long period of time, that this would be, the project would not be reviewed, they decided at the last minute to give it a complete review, so that held us up for about a year. So we finally got everybody's blessings. The same was advertised on Sunday. We have, let me see here, preview conference is March the 16th, bid openings will be April 6th. Now, I wish I could stand here and tell you what to expect, but some of it may be aware of, that we've had two years of pandemic and a lockdown. Looks like we're getting ready for World War III, so I don't know what that's going to do to our interest or our pricing. But anyway, I've contacted contractors that I know might have some interest, and they've all pulled plans off the Trasko site to take a look at it, and I told them, "We've got 90 days to hold these bids," which means, at this point, these contractors are so busy, anybody that's got any capability at all and a work ethic is covered up there. So time's as good as money for a lot of these guys. So I told them, "We work with them to try to schedule this, you know, so we can, you know, look more for the little bit, or so we can schedule this at a time that's best for the little league and best for them." But we should, we should know more on April 6th, and we crap open the bids and see where they are. And I'll be sending you a set of these, these are latest and greatest, and...
So that's good stuff, and Amy helped me out here, I believe, the last estimated cost was $370, estimated cost of full inflation.
I have no idea.
Well, I think, just don't quote me on this, but I think it was around $375, so we got 300, 250 from the state, and we have a match, and then we got another $50,000 available following that for grants.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what else that you're talking about, so I'll remind you, but I forgot that.
The, just to give you a little, a little bit of heads up, the Richlands Sewer Treatment Plant bid last week was $4 million overbought. So ours, by the way, will be bidding in the next couple of weeks, and it's estimated, obviously, to be 3.2 million over, and I don't know how, that's another story, but so odds are, this is going to be a reflection of the same results. So we just have to see where it goes.
Yeah, I had no clue. Any, any questions? Anybody have anything to ask me about this one here?
Amy has communicated with Little League when he needs to, he's been in contact with them. I know on a couple occasions, I don't know to what level, but we're going to do everything we can to obviously keep Little League moving. We're spending a lot of tax dollars out there right now to try to get that place back in shape to where it's even usable, period. So we'll do everything we can to try to make it work, but I got a really good feeling it's probably going to be put off, because of the cost of the inflation, but we'll see.
All right, man.
Thanks, Amy. Appreciate it.
Enjoy your ride.
So next, we're going to get an update on the Tassau County RDA by Mr. Kirk Brady.
Thanks for the opportunity, you know, following the, the athletes and, you know, other important people, it's pretty humbling, man. But anyway, let me just give you a couple, a couple things. Again, I think it's privileged for you here with you folks tonight, and definitely thank Chris for the invite to come up here and discuss a couple things with, with the Town of Tassau and with leadership here, you know, about what we do with Apple Recreation in the county. And, you know, we're always, the county's always looking for partnerships, that's what we grow. A little background of what we're, of what we're seeing as far as trends, and of course, anybody that, that reads or keeps up with anything for area of the state, we're, to the point where we're recognized quite a bit. It's been a labor of love, but sometimes it's been very disappointing at the same time, but, you know, we get a lot of people, we attract a lot of people here to our area now. We think that the models will show from the trends coming from Richmond and coming from Northern Virginia, and talking with the people from Charlotte and skyline areas, we're becoming a genial, you know, it's sort of understudied in a lot of ways, but we're, we're working at it real hard to, to make things happen under our watch. You know, when we turn it over to the next generation for their watch, we'll, we'll see how much better it hits. But, but it is, it's very exciting to see recreation take, take its proper step in the county. It is another venue. We can get people here, but we've got to have venues to keep them here, to get them here for a couple of days. We, we have to have opportunities, we have to have things for people to do. And as, as the price of, of recreation, it's going to be crazy this summer. We're going to see beaches that where we usually frequent two, three times a year, we may not even be there this year. And there's going to be a lot of folks that's going to have a lot of, a lot of problems as far as tourism goes. I don't think it's going to be our case, but it becomes a thing why, because we're already looked at, you know, very favorable, and this is group, this is group type of recreation, it's family type of recreation, and it's money well spent. So let me just give you a couple, a couple names of what we do. Of course, again, I'm chair of the RDA for the county, also a chair with Spearhead with, with that group. IDA, I work on the state tourist group, and I don't know, upper TBA with the, that group with the round table. So, you know, let's just start with the river systems. The river system, we finally got, after about five years, we finally got the river declared a scenic, scenic river, as far as the navigable purposes. It's not to say that our river's not beautiful from there on up, it just, we had to get it to the navigable purposes, which is to see the blood. But that's, we're seeing activity, we're seeing kayak activity, talking with Vince out here, Di Amato, is that right? Yeah. Nice guy, and he looks like he's going to have, I remember we talked several times, Chris and you introduced him to him down at the honey festival. He's, he's looking at, you know, doing some hiking stuff, and he's going to be an outfitter, and he's going to be a really good need for what we want in Tassau. You know, we've done quite a bit, but we got to do more. So I think with his expertise and what they want to do, and they're fun, I mean, they love what they're doing. So we've hiked with them, they've got access to some beautiful places where they want to share with the general public, and that's what we want. That's how people you want in your community is willing to share with others. We've got too many people that don't want to share with even themselves, unless it's others. So we can't share as a venue to outside people until we figure out what we want to do ourselves within. I think it's happened, and talk with Aaron and our board supervisors, I think we've got some best leadership that I've seen since I've been involved in anything in this county as far as, you know, planning and leadership or whatever, whatever you call it. Good to work with, got great ideas. It's just exciting every time we, you know, we meet and talk about things. So Chris, when we talk to you a little about Spearhead, now Mayor Hoops, I think he's got a second home down there on the trails, and anytime you go down to the, our Jawa trails, your life will see that white Jeep going somewhere down the road, with the back of the Dragon Jeep and several more. So the exciting part this is, and we were just talking, discussing this as well, GPOSA is coming to town. They sold 300 passes in less than three days. This is like a thousand dollars a pass for these Jeeps to ride. They're all coming here. Where we going to keep them? Where we going to feed them? I guess we'll just work it out as we go, I don't know, but we, we got them here, and they're so excited to ride our trails. We got, when we complete our, our trails down there in the Jawa, we'll have excess of 300 miles. I mean, that's crazy. Nobody on the East Coast has got that, nobody. So we've worked this thing for the last bunches of years to get to this point where we can now see something arriving from it. And the next phase, we'll connect it to the back of the lake, where it's quicker, okay? We've got some access, we've got some harder properties to, you know, to work with, and get some easel and some additional things, but it's going to happen. It will happen. It's just exciting. And then in another phase, we can bring Pocahontas back to the lake, and we're working on that. As a matter of fact, our board supervisors worked with another gem justice to get this, we didn't think it'd ever happen, but you guys made it happen, so I love it. So we're going, we're going to use that property to bring that in to here. So the venue is, is taking shape. So the venue is, is taking shape, taking, and of course, Todd, you know, we talk all the time about all kinds of activities and sometimes it makes sense and Todd, some of them are probably not, but it's still our story, right? But it is very exciting to see what we're doing. We're, we're partnering with D W R, which is Division of Wildlife Resources. And what we, what we foresee about doing that for, that's just things out there outdoors a lot. We wanna do outdoor education with the school system. I bet the schools gonna love it. We can use our trails as outdoor classrooms. We can study water, we can study birdlife, we can study butterflies if you need to. We can study everything out there that the school system can't, they don't have a place.
Do a lot of physics, too.
Yes, it's, it's a zone.
When your Jeep's like that.
Yeah. But it, it is exciting to see how this is going and I'm working on another grant to, to get a telescope. I've got ten thousand dollars so far, it's gonna cost me thirty thousand to get it, so maybe I could go for twenty, I've got ten, I need thirty. And it's a, it's a telescope that we can do stargazing, we can move it to different areas of the county and other counties. All seven coalfield counties, we're gonna be moving around. So we'll have to have places to, to do this. And we got people that's gonna be, you know, they know stars. I mean, I know Little Digger and Big Digger and North Star and, you know, East West, that kind of stuff. But these people are experts in it. It's a, it's a wonderful type of telescope, big screen, it's, it's top of the line. It will be mobile, it's in a trailer, so you can just slide it out, slide it in, you don't have to take that to do anything. So we, we want our school systems to be able to enjoy this. They don't have it right now and they'll never have it. But we can provide it for them. So it's, it's another big interest, but with the D W R, you know, they're already taking over, you know, the fish population study and stocking of, of Lake Quentin and, and also done here at this lake. But we had a, a study, a, it was a study done by, Cameron, last year. And we brought our group in to look at recreation, to do an audit type thing. What you have, we'll tell you what we think you can do with what you got. But one of the things that, that they were so excited about was putting the two lakes together, putting Lake Quentin to Lake Shaw. I think it could be easy done. I think we can, we can come up the road and I, I measured a bridge, I believe we can have a walkway. Todd, but with V D A about this process, but...
Home Market, Home Market Street?
Yeah, yeah, I think we can do that. I think we can have a walkway there without any major thing. However, he told me is that when we schedule this bridge for maintenance, we will make sure that you have a walkway in there. So we're gonna put that at the top of the list of maintenance on a bridge, so we can be insured there. But then we'll be working, I, I think we could, as, as a town and as a county, I believe we could work these, these bridges out there. We could have this trail, I can tell all the...
I don't think it's but three land, between Market Street and the lake, between Market Street and, and the wind, three land.
It's a four mile, four, four, four point, three miles. It could be great, folks, it could be another venue that we've been, you know, looking for. We got three point three, what, eight, three, three point three miles around Lake Quentin now. That, that is completely, talking to Aaron, Aaron, can I tell what you already, okay. Aaron, Leslie or Les Love, they got, they're gonna be painting out there at the lake. Because we're gonna have another big group come in in July and it's gonna take over everything we've got up there. Whether it's gonna be camping areas...
That's the O T R, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Painting the trail or painting the park?
It's gonna be everybody. It's gonna feel separate, it'll feel separate.
Not the trail?
No, the paint, the painting you're doing, is it around the trail or is it just...
No, painting's gonna be up the...
Yeah, my understanding is...
Both of the main entries, one at the hill.
Okay. They're dirt.
For right now. Now, I think in the next phase, can I say it one more? I think in the next phase, there's another bridge. I keep that to myself, Aaron, but even if I tell everybody else that thing. But there'll be a beach plan at the end of the lake. There'll be another access, of course, you have to have a bathroom out there and shower, because there'll be swimming. So we're gonna be swimming up there at the lake. Be more camp areas hooked in up there, because we'll have to put electricity and so that, that's gonna work out for you out there. We need more areas here in, in town for, you know, cabins or RVs or, or primitive camping. I love primitive camping, not, not just at the tent, this, this new phase of primitive camping is great. If you've seen the way they do, like on hillsides, building like decks and that's what you camp on, it's, it's fantastic the way they do this. But they thought it's primitive camp though, to me it's, it's a good thing, you know? But I, I think that's gonna be another thing that we can be extremely proud of. And so it's, we gotta get youth, though, involved. We gotta figure out something that we can get them excited in the outdoors, whether it's them on our trails and we got another, we got our hiking trail. And I, I, I did have to talk to, of course, Todd, Todd knows all that. We've got Eastern Hiking Trail, Eastern Mountain. We're working it out, we gotta get us to agree on some things. How with Dr. Hunter, we'll be able to access that except for two months of the year, November, December and April. Which is pretty much, April will be in the turk town now, so he, he wants to be in the turk town, so, okay, you know, that's fine. But we got a group to go in there and fix this trail, because we gotta do a lot of stuff back there. Now, it's in, it's in a rough stage and it's not really something that most of us can have fun with. This thing can go on after, it can extend. Actually, I've hiked this all the way back to the overlooking Bluefield. It's, I mean, it's, it's a whole day, I can tell you that. It's early morning and all the way in the dark of the night when you reach that end up there. But that is something we can do on Eastern River, it's there for us. We were gonna work for it, but we've got it all the way to the power lines, we've got access to there.
But they're still looking to tie it into the Bluestone, have some...
We can tie it, we can tie it into Bluestone, we can have Bluestone and Trailhead down there, we have Trailhead here and Trailhead there. We probably have about three more trail views. And, and I think that would be a perfect venue, it's a health line. I mean, you folks are saying, Chris, you're, you know, you, you have to have these outside activities. It's one of the reasons that we're so far behind in state of Virginia in our health. Out of a hundred and thirty-five rankings in the state of Virginia, we ranked one nineteen. We were one twenty-three. But because we've added some things, we've moved up to one nineteen. Now, for some of y'all, it may be, you know, well, this is very, not really a concern, but it is a concern. Your health insurance is rated on how your community is rated, health wise, up to the state of Virginia. So the more of these things we can do to get people out there, our health rate goes down. In other words, we could drop this thing to the eighties, very easy. So it's left up to us to get this thing. Dr. Catherine, you, you, I mean, you know how this works, I mean, from the, from your group. It's, that's what you gotta do. I mean, we're working, we're trying to do it from a county point of view and Aaron is working hard with us on that for these venues. But I looked at it one time, but usually when I get excited, I, I did that all the time. I love sharing passion and the passion that we all have in this part of the country is our passion. It, it's hard to describe how we are to anybody else. When people come in here from Northern Virginia, we all must have come to the house. We, we want all, we want, we want to come in and spend our money, we wanna go back there. You know, don't go say it your little one way, you're gonna want us to break your money in here.
Well, they can buy a second home here if that one.
Some room, some room. But y'all pay the taxes, we need to raise some land tax. But it, it, they love us because they love what we thought. We're different, we're different than anybody in the state. Aaron, you go to Richmond, they're, sometimes they'll laugh at you a bit, but I love them. When they laugh at you, it means they're paying attention to you. So anyway, Chris, I appreciate you, you know, thank you for sitting on here. And, you know, anytime we can, we can do anything for the town as far as the county authority, Spirithead, it's getting bigger. You know, sometimes we get, you know, a little bit frustrated, but, you know, jump ass. I mean, we'll, we'll go look at elk, we'll go hike the mountain, we've got all kinds of places to hike in this county. We'll, we'll go back there, I mean, we'll, I don't have horse, I don't have any horses now, but I have to put some of the farming there. So anyway, I appreciate it, Todd.
I'll see you, Chris.
So the San Diego trails, they're getting ready to grow by about ten thou, ten thousand more acres, right?
Yeah, we got, we're getting ten one thousand and here's some, some of our Spirithead man, so...
Two extra, Aaron, could you leave then?
We'll...
Thank you, thanks for the update, Chris.
Those trails, too, they're for, I mean, they're designed for Jeeps, but it's side by sides, four wheelers.
Yeah, there's some that are, Jeeps aren't allowed on.
Jeeps aren't, and there's, I mean, mountain bikes, hiking, running, we can do whatever we want.
Yeah.
So they're multi-dimensional, which I love. For people that don't wanna just drive a Jeep, they actually move their body.
Well, they're, he, he's way up there up there, he's just standing with Jeeps, well there.
I see that. Yeah, but the price of diesel is killing, they say, it's gonna stay parked for a little while.
Okay, so next, we got new business recognition, none tonight. So next, we need approval of the minutes for the council meeting on February eighth, twenty twenty-two. And then special call council meeting and budget work session on February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two.
Make the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the minutes, say so by saying aye. All opposed, say so by saying nay. Okay, so the minutes are approved. Next, I need a motion for the approval of financial statements and financial report for February twenty twenty-two.
So, second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval of financial statements and financial report for February twenty twenty-two, say so by saying aye. All opposed, say so by saying nay. All right, financial statements and reports are approved. So next is the committee of conference updates. Councilmember Davis, give us an update on the planning commission committee.
Our meeting yesterday was canceled because our grand food bomb was sick. Chris was sick, so we had to mend some of the meeting.
All right. So the next is our unfinished business section. I, Matt Davis will give us some update on the Main Street mini park.
Okay, kind of a, kind of a sensitive issue to me. I'm not real familiar with how the mini park originally came to be a reality. I'm not real sure of what the funding mechanisms were to make the mini park possible. But what I wanna share with you tonight is some information that's a direct reflection of the issue that we had with Sharon Thomas and that deal related, I think everybody's familiar with that. But what I'm trying to do is put some pictures in here that, the pictures don't really show the effects of the settlement and what it's caused, but I, I can just verbally tell you and kind of explain some of the pictures, but on the first page there, you'll notice that that yellow line is, is actually supposed to be a level line, but you can see right behind Chris Mitchell, he's been over right there. You, you can see the Aiden block where it shifted just in behind him. Also, that line is, that Aiden block was at one time leveled with that yellow line. There's also a, a capsule behind it. There's also a capsule, time capsule that's sitting behind it. You can see that the block has kind of shifted around it. If you look at the second picture, that second picture on there is, looks like to me about three and quarter, three and five sixteenths settlement over probably about thirteen foot. And so what that's done in, in Andy, Andy can speak to a whole lot higher degree of engineering than I can with this. But the settlement of the land where all the concrete, all of that in there has obviously affected the building. A lot of, a lot of the, the fascia and the soft fit right now are, it's what, it's called compression. But because the way the settlement's going, it's kind of settling in the mil, in the middle and it's cracked all pieces, but it's put the fascia and the soft fit and some of the other, you know, the roof and all the compression. Some of the walls are actually in, in a lot of tension. So I've done everything that I know to do. I've, I've met with several members of staff, Chris earlier, building officials, I don't know, straight, Donnie Pruitt. And unfortunately, we feel like it's inevitable and it's also in the best interests of the town to remove the building. To, to bring, to bring in the professionals to drill holes and force in expandable concrete or hydraulics is gonna well exceed the value of the building.
Which building?
It's the mini park building.
Yeah.
Oh.
The old school.
It's the mini park. So you can turn the pages, you can turn the pages and look at the difference, how much the front porch is settled. The front porch is over six, it's like six and a quarter inches of settlement there. There's a lot of buckling going on. If you flip over four or five pages, you can see Donnie's holding a plum, a level, it's supposed to be plum and obviously it's off to a degree. So anyway, can we...
What are you, are you gonna, how are you gonna stabilize the ground there?
Well, you know, what I like to do is capitalize on the building. So I'm just trying to, I'm trying to take it one step at a time, but I can't, there's just no way to financially justify trying to save that building.
It's basically a shed.
It's a shed with a bathroom.
Yeah, I mean, it's actually got a concrete slab in it and it...
Yeah, it is, you're right.
I mean, it's got some cosmetic. But I'm saying it's a, you know, it was a sum of money, it's got windows, I mean, y'all all seen, I don't have to explain to you what it was. But unfortunately, because of the, the lack of appropriate compaction and, and compaction material. And when I say that, I'm not just saying that because I'm guessing, I'm telling you, we dug it up. And I've got a multitude of pictures, thanks to Andy and his engineering on the other case that shows the raw veins, et cetera. So it is, it's absolutely a direct reflection of inadequate compaction and results of inadequate compaction material. So...
That building is not really a brick building, it just looks...
That's correct.
Is the facade salvageable?
Yeah, we, we went in there the other day, we feel like we can, we can salvage all the trusses. Some of them are gonna be popped off at the, we call them bracket, the angle brackets. I noticed some sixteen penny nails in there and pulled back quite a bit. So again, we feel like we could salvage a lot of the wood structure that's in there. But at the rate that it settled, and some of you can reflect back with me on events that we've had at the mini park in the last three years. But the settlement that took place at that mini park has really been dramatic over the last two years. I mean, it was, it's incredible how much time, how much decay and time activated, inadequate material just, just fell away. So what you had, you had in there materials that, that disintegrated and created voids such as wood and obviously the ground was caving around. So I don't know how much more it's gotta go, it may do it, it may do it for, for years and years and years. I don't know what I'll put in there. I don't know what I'll put in there.
Is the plan to kind of, I know we're, we're talking about the building right now, but is the plan to kind of dig up what's there so we can stabilize it, so it can be a park again?
Well, we looked at it and, and again, I don't know a way to, we can do that, absolutely. I thought you were talking about the building. No, once the building is removed, yes, we can bring in equipment and dig it out and, and put material back that's, that can structure it, yeah.
Yeah, we were looking at.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, so in time, we can put something back there, absolutely.
Right.
I know, I know that the foundation, and everybody knows it was a basement there at one time, but they actually emptied that material out of there and removed the concrete floor in the basement to keep it from polluting, just like a pool. You know, they actually removed it, which was good, but the material that was put back.
Well, when Sharon does what she's gonna do, isn't that gonna involve digging some of that up anyhow?
Yeah, the engineering that was done by Dick Landreth was swole. Not the engineering, but the takeoff that was done by Dick Landreth and Swole Construction under the guidance of Andy Cecil, his engineer, and actually showed tunneling under that slab, which is going to obviously consist of retaining walls as you tunnel, I mean, it's quite a job, but there's no need in doing that. If I can remove, I mean, if the building's gone, then they can open cut. So unfortunately, uh, like I said, I've consulted, I've talked to Andy and other engineers and just to try to correct it. As, yeah, we can level it, we, we could probably spend fifteen, ten, fifteen thousand dollars and level it up, but I don't know what the extent of settlement's gonna do. So it might, we might level it up and then.
And it settles.
That's right, it'll just keep going, so. I just wanted to let council know that.
Cut your losses.
Yeah, just cut the losses and I'm not in a position right now to do the time and other projects to, to do it. Uh, but I will be coming back in the future for a formal vote from council to proceed forward. We'll keep an eye on it, pull back. But unfortunately, I don't think there's any other, any other route to go to remove the structure.
All right, thank you. So, uh, for unfinished business, any miscellaneous items? No? Okay, we'll move on to new business. Next, we need a vote to approve the quote for fireworks. Mayor Davis, give us my opinion.
Okay, you've got, you've got a quote in here that's, that's, uh, in my, it's significantly more than what we paid last year. Um, what was it, Mr. Smith? It was like eighty-five last year, just went up quite a bit. And we've got a contract. I just need to know if council wants to proceed with it. It's after July, so if you do, obviously I can plug it in. I can tell you that Aaron graciously offers but his, his funds that he has to go toward projects like this, Mr. Heinz, and they're, they're not there, so. But his willingness to participate was obviously there. Unfortunately, the fund is not available to you to help out, so I really appreciate his support there. I won't forget it next year though. Any, any questions?
Can you have that in your budget?
This is gonna be after July, so I can plug it in, but no, it's not in my budget right now.
It will.
The budget presented.
Last call.
Uh, we haven't done general fund yet, so. I'll plug it in there, we're still trying to balance general fund.
I don't think not having fireworks is an option.
I agree, right. I'm just making sure, lots of things aren't options, but I just want to make sure we pay for it.
Yeah, it'll absolutely be, I'll budget forward, council wants to make that.
Okay, I just need a motion to approve the quote.
I'll make the motion.
Get a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the fireworks quote, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say so by saying nay. All right, so, uh, we have the approval. Next is to approve the USDA resolution. Mayor Davis.
Okay, every year we apply for free money, but y'all have to do a resolution in order to get the free money. Um, and I'm not sure whether it's gonna be available, but, but they already is working with us to try to get it, get ahead of the game. So I just, again, we apply for a fifty-fifty match on Cruz. And we've been real fortunate with that in the past, so I just need approval of this.
Motion approved, Mayor.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the USDA resolution, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say so by saying nay. All right, so the resolution's approved. Next, uh, fire chief position recommendation, Mayor Davis.
Okay, you've got a couple of letters in your, in your packet there. One of the letters I wrote, uh, a while back when our, our fire chief moved on, Jason Hodge, and we put in acting Jason Kinder. And what I did was I asked the fire department to just get back to me with a recommendation on who they would like to see as fire chief. And if you look at your, the guidelines, the code book, council does approve a number of management positions and the fire chief is one, but according to the letter that I received back from Jason Kinder, who is the assistant fire chief, is also presently, as we speak, acting fire chief, but they all recommended Mr. John Thomas.
I'll make the motion on that, John Thomas.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving John Thomas to be the next fire chief, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say so by saying nay. All right, so it looks like Mr. Thomas will take the position. So next on the agenda is to approve the budget amendments. Ms. Reagan?
In your packet, you have a few budget amendments that I would like to ask be made. Um, the first one is for an increase to police miscellaneous revenue and, and also increase in building maintenance for the police department. Um, Chief Mills has applied for a grant with Versa and has been approved. And they have replaced the flooring in the police department because it was starting to chip and to come up. So that has been done. Um, once we pay for it, we will get reimbursed. So that would be what that first budget amendment is for. Um, the second budget amendment is to reallocate funds in the budget. We have had to have some upgrades at the Little League field and this is the line items where I have found that we can take that money for and move it to cover the cost of those upgrades. Um, budget amendment three is to budget for funds not originally budgeted. This is a grant that we have received to do the study for the pressure zone up in Buskle. Um, it's a wash, we received thirty-five thousand, we spent thirty-five thousand. Um, the next budget amendment is kind of the same thing. It's for the sanitary sewer evaluation survey. Um, we have received a hundred thousand dollars for that and we still have remain, I'm sorry. Yes, we still have remaining sixty-three thousand dollars of that left, but there will be more costs coming for that. And the last one is the town council had voted to, um, move funds from the general fund to the IEDA fund for the demolition of the buildings at the Rainy Lot. If I could get a motion.
You make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the budget amendments, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say so by saying nay. All right, there you go. So next, Mayor Davis will discuss the cleanup month for May twenty twenty-two.
Okay, well, every, every year we try to have a free cleanup month. Uh, we don't take tires, construction material, but we do. And we're just recommending the month of May to do that. And we, we also try to, try to schedule areas and get to them to the best of our ability, but we always end up getting all the pickup, but month of May.
That's usually the month we do it.
Yeah, May.
Yeah.
Is there any way we can get in touch with Thompson, Thompson Alley Rescue? They do the chemicals, uh, paint and all that, connect these all into.
Absolutely, I didn't know they did that.
You go out to Faraground and turn that in, bring this stuff down there, all this old paint and sprays and, you know. That'd be a big help.
All right, yeah, I didn't know they did that. Okay, good stuff, I'll leave it, I'll get in touch with it. I've been looking for somebody to.
Ben, Ms. Ben?
Yeah.
You should know to get in touch with it.
Actually, I've worked, okay. So we just need a, a motion to designate May as cleanup month?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say so by saying nay. All right, so motion carries. So next item F is fraud cases, Leanne Reagan.
Um, over the last few months, the town council has had eight employees that have had fraud cases with the Virginia Employment Commission. Um, our HR department has reported these cases as fraud. Some of the employees have gotten ten ninety-nines, even though they never received any of the funds. We have tried calling the Virginia Employment Commission, we have not really had any success in reaching anyone. We have reached out to Delegate Moorefield and Senator Hackworth's office to see if they can help get air information to who it needs to go to and help get us some type of resolution on this. Um, and they did reach out to the Virginia, Virginia Employment Commission representatives. Um, our HR department has also been in contact with investigator Menifee in their police department. He is trying to get records to find out where the, the money was sent and to get to the bottom of everything. Um, on March the third, his subpoena was approved and it was given to the Tassau County Sheriff's Office and they have served it to the Virginia Employment Commission. They must have a response back to us by March the fifteenth. And investigator Menifee also said he had spoke to Detective Hall with the sheriff's office and they also have similar cases that they're working on with the Virginia Employment Commission. So we are trying to get to the bottom of that and find out what has happened.
When I called to report mine, they said that there was hundreds of phone calls that day, people getting ten ninety-nines that didn't know anybody drew until they got the ten ninety-nine, and that's how I was.
Yeah, when I talked to them, they were getting like five hundred cases a day.
It just happened to me today as well, I gotta pay a buck for being.
They said to do the frauds and I had to file with the IRS to get his PIN number so nobody can follow my taxes.
It's awful, I've never seen it say they might get forty a month, five hundred a day.
I'm not even doing a police system.
So people were getting unemployment while they were working for you?
No.
No, they used her name.
Used their names of employees.
Oh. They used my associate's name.
What make.
Right. So they're town employees and somebody got into your database and got your stuff?
Well, I don't think it's ours because it's everywhere. Right. I think it's.
Well, how do you?
Unemployment.
It's so much money being swallowed around.
Yeah.
It's just everybody that's. Well, we just wanted to give you an update, fix you here about the funding. Uh, nothing's been, you know, we don't have any security issues, just, we just wanted to let you know that fraud issues, not within, but we had one, we're working.
All right, so, uh, next word, uh, any miscellaneous new business?
Miscellaneous, Ben and Tom.
Definitely.
I do want to let council know that the IEDA unanimously agreed last night to proceed forward with the PDEA guideline on the sports complex, so that ad will run.
It's Thursday.
This Thursday, I think it's actually already on the town site, but, um, it'll actually run this coming Thursday for the first day. And in order to give enough flexibility, there's twenty-six days in there, still twenty-five. I mean, it's forty-six, I'm sorry. It's still a forty-five, so we just leave one more day in there to be sure. Um, I also have received as of the end of last week, the P E R, Professional Engineering Report. So any state or federal agencies that we go to for funding, which will be, which will start this Thursday, uh, we have all the documentation that they always ask for with engineering reports, which, uh, so I've got that and I've also got the updated Shamira report that is totally off the hook. It is incredible. I mean, it's a, it's a.
If you could give us one little snip from that about how that.
Can you affect us? I'll give you the, but the biggest thing that stands out on that Shamira report in the words conservative or under it, but it's estimated three hundred and seventy, I wanna say two, man, three hundred and seventy-two thousand people a year in this community for an indoor sports complex, three hundred and seventy-two thousand. So.
I want to put Dr. Mullins on the spot, this may embarrass him, but I asked him what he spent when he went to a sports complex this last weekend, when he took.
Grand ball. And.
He went to a volleyball tournament, how much money did you spend?
Fifteen hundred dollars easily. Year three, four.
So what if everybody only spends a hundred dollars?
Yeah, just a hundred.
In a year, that's three point seven million dollars into our community. And there's, I don't know how you do that, it'd be at least five hundred. I never got, Mayor, did you ever spend less than five hundred when you went to travel soccer?
Never. Yeah, it, it, it's amazing opportunity and this is the reason that you have low.
So now all these businesses that we need support for these trails, so now these businesses need more employees, right, to handle the business and all these employers are getting paychecks that live in and around our community that are also going to spend money in our community. But as you said before, the best tax dollars are which tax dollars? The ones from outside of our community, they come here, spend and go home, right? And then over the next twenty, thirty years, we have beautiful roads and all kinds of amenities and our infrastructure is taken care of because we have a budget that we can meet because we're not overburning our, our citizens with tax, high taxes. So, I mean.
Also want to add to it that I've got an email from, from Rural Development saying that our project qualifies for federal backing. So regardless of the dollar amount that we may have to borrow, whether it's a G O or revenue bond, the federal government will back the bond.
Will back our part?
Will back our part of the bond. Um, I've talked to two different banks, very positive conversations of the last conversation I had was with National Bank a week ago and they are very, very much on board. So, uh, anyway, I will be sending that report out. There was a couple of typos in it and I've actually got the final draft on my computer, not even opened it up, but I know what the typos were, so, yeah. But I'll be sending it out tomorrow to the rest of the world, so look, look forward to it. I know, I know Kurt, I came before Kurt, it's been a while, the IEDA, but we're ready, yeah, this is a big project, this is, this is a real big project. I'll be back.
Tomorrow night. We'll meet tomorrow night, come back tomorrow night.
Yeah, it's an incredible document, it's, it's just amazing, especially when you can get the federal government to back it, that's pretty good.
I was just telling Eric just right then, which we're so good, we really haven't been one of our products. But anytime you can get a bond, and what we've seen from the county's view, it may be, it may be a little higher on the interest rate, but you're much better off going with the bond rather than going with a, a blood bowl or any kind of banking system because they don't really want you if you, you can't pay. They definitely don't want you, but other things will want you. So we, we've always made this standard, like, you know, you're trying to get as much of the bond as you possibly can and get them to back it forward. So we've, we've always made this standard, like, you know, try to get as much of the bond as you possibly can to get the government to back it for you.
And y'all work those bonds through, huh? Most of y'all would love a bank property.
Well, we do, you know, recently.
Well, I think it sounds great. Those Northern Virginians come in here and spend their money and go back home.
Yep.
If we get this sports complex, we're gonna have Southwest Virginians, Southern Western Virginians, North Carolinians, Tennesseans, and these little other people in our region doing the same thing. It all works together to provide the services and the facilities we need for these people coming in.
Well, Dr. Melon said worse like this, I think. If, if I've got a restaurant, you've got a restaurant, or you've got a store, we all live here together. I spend my ten dollars, you spend your ten dollars, maybe we have any money. But if we get somebody else to come in and spend ten dollars with us, it's new money.
Yep.
Then we both.
Absolutely. So they don't have to be from Northern Virginia. We'll take the region. We'll take anybody.
Is that it, Tom?
Yeah, that's all.
Okay, so now, sir, miscellaneous public comment. Anybody, nobody signed them?
No, sir.
All righty. Uh, so next, any council members have comments?
I had, I had a few questions. Um, I was contacted by somebody that was talking about Kid Zone and they were wondering if any of the things that had people's names on it were preserved. I believe she had her, her, there was a bench that was in her mother's memory that she was hoping to get if it was salvageable.
I'll check on that. I know you asked me about that last, last week. There was a couple of pieces of equipment that we did salvage and hopefully we can.
Well, I know the, um, the fence posts all had names on them. I'm sure people that sponsored, some people that sponsored might want those.
We had planned on, uh, taking those names and putting them back out there on the wall or something, but of course, if somebody wants them.
Well, I mean, as long as they're, I mean, because they did do a whole lot of work to, to get that to come to fruition.
Absolutely.
My understanding was when the original group presented their proposal out there, they were gonna take those name plans and create something new for the new park.
Okay.
Now, that was my understanding.
Yeah, we still got, we got.
Okay. Um, also, if I remember correctly, um, from our last meeting, our ladder truck was supposed to have an inspection?
Yes.
Did that happen?
Yeah, we inspected it. Ironically, Bluefield, I'm talking to Bluefield, they just got through spending about seven thousand dollars on their brand, it is ten years old on their truck. But yeah, we had ours inspected. We got some work we need to do with fires. We do every year. Um, so I talked to TJ this morning and we found somebody that can work on the bucket. The bucket's actually got a frame crack in it and it's got, it needs some, some money spent on it and we will.
Okay, are we looking at possibly replacing that? Even with another used one?
Yes.
Okay, because I know, I mean, I saw a structure fire right down the street from me.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Towers, I thought.
Mm-hmm.
I'm waiting to hear back from, uh, from the fire, of course, they got a new chief now and, uh.
Right.
Jason's been with him for a long time, doing an incredible job. Um, and uh, so yeah, it's gonna take him a little while, but they know that, that I'm very open to finding a, a good used piece of equipment. So, yeah.
I do think that we need to look into, you know, we do every year, schedule in replacing police cruisers. We do that with EMS. I think that we need to put the fire station into the rotation.
Anything else? Anybody else?
I'd like to thank our district, Southwest, Eric being here and also Kurt. I appreciate you coming down here. And again, he updates you today. This was a great night. I mean, for that night when we have three state champions here, I think that's just absolutely amazing. And then every, all those other kids that did so well, I mean, the list you read was just.
What's ironic is all of our kids from this region drive all the way to Liberty to get the version of the track. We're gonna try to fix it.
He says he loves to do it.
He says he loves to do it. But we're gonna try to fix it. This, this indoor sports complex has the same issue.
Redford, we have districts or regions warning that, or I mean, that, they allow that and then Liberty lets us go there. But I can't wait to get, yeah. And I think that there's, I'm pretty sure that Richland and Graham didn't have indoor for those reasons. I think we're able to bring indoor track to all of our schools. Did they, Brett?
Graham didn't.
Graham didn't. I don't think Richland did either. So, I mean, we can bring, bring indoor track back to all our schools.
Jason, you have a twin.
I've got a four, so I can go out the door.
Did he just walk by you?
I'm sitting here speaking on your, that's good.
He wasn't here. He wasn't here.
Oh, that is.
Do we have any more comments?
I was just hoping there wasn't fire. Was there a fire?
There was a pile burning wire on the track.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't.
Shut me up.
Oh, shut.
Can I get a second? All in favor of appearing to be restricted by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, face up by saying nay?
See you.